And so, just as a reminder from the general public.
Okay. All righty, we will try to remember to do that.
What do you say, testing one, two?
Yeah. Okay, normally we would move on to approval of the minutes, but our minutes for the meeting September 10th, 2001 are not ready, so we will bypass on that. This evening, we have two hearings. We have a quasi judicial planned unit development 00-01. This is an approval of a 29-unit residential planned unit development to include 17 single-family and 12 duplex units at 16281 South Oak Tree Terrace in Clarkamas County. We also have a legislative hearing this evening, 01-04, the City of Oregon City, adoption of the Oregon City Waterfront Master Plan as an ancillary document to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan. And when we have our hearings, we have legal issues that we need to address before we can begin our hearings, so bear with me as I read you that information. As I mentioned, we have two public hearings on applications tonight. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available seven days before tonight's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report, along with written comments and input received through the public notification process for each application. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown in the chart over here. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out the yellow slip that was suggested a few minutes ago and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Any letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they are submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and address. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria applies in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence, so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, ORS 197.796 requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. So that takes care of that part of it.
Chairman, one minor clarification, just to make sure. Those are quasi judicial procedures for the first hearing on the PUD, and they don't apply to the legislative hearing.
Okay, great. All righty. So before we begin on the planned unit development, do any of the commissioners have any ex parte contact with regards to that hearing?
None.
Okay, hearing none. Have any commissioners visited that location?
Not since it was first proposed, but I did at that time.
Okay.
I also visited it previous to this meeting.
And I was myself. Okay, so then we would be ready for the staff report on our PD 00-01.
Chairperson and commissioners, this is a request to develop a, well, it's a preliminary plan proposal for a planned unit development of 29 units on 20 lots located at 16281 South Oak Tree Terrace, but primarily on tax lots 1717 and 1722 at that address. The applicant has appeared before you previously and has had been granted some continuance time in order to rethink and revise some of the proposals and to come back with a revised proposal, which is what you will hear tonight. In the staff report, I'd like to make the following points. Your first sheet of your staff report will show a staff report addendum dated October 1st, 2001, and the recommendation at the bottom of it is to add a condition, number 24, to the other 23 conditions the staff is recommending if you choose to approve this. And condition 24 would say that the applicant shall submit evidence to demonstrate that schools, fire, and police services and facilities have adequate capacity to serve the project. That is one thing that I'd like to enter into the record. On page seven of your staff report, if you would turn to that, little tiny numbers down in the bottom right-hand corner. I would like to amend the last sentence of the discussion for section 16.12.10, street design planter strips, and to say, because there are hundreds of trees in the open space tracks, staff do not, staff feels, leave the do not out, that trees or planter strips are impracticable.
Which page are you on again, Ms. Collins?
Page seven. Again, the paragraph would read, "No planter strips are proposed due to the need to have narrow streets. For that reason, sidewalks are provided on one side of the street only." Because there are hundreds of trees in the open space tracks, staff feels that trees or planter strips are impracticable. The word impracticable is part of the criteria, criterion, and staff felt that would be a stronger statement and a better finding.
Okay.
And then finally, on page two of Exhibit A, those are the conditions. It's quite a long report. Condition number 16 in Exhibit A, we agree that we should say that the applicant must obtain Oregon City and Clarkamas County approval of proposed site SIGHT, site distance improvements. So I'd like to make that correction at this time. This site is 8.35 acres, and it's heavily vegetated, consists of two tax lots at the end of South Oak Tree Terrace. A small paved road previously was used for a site access, and it cuts across the property, but it's basically overgrown. The site slopes downhill from the north to the south, and it is roughly bisected by a natural drainage way that flows into a lively drainage basin, which ultimately drains into Abernathy Creek. The upper part of the drainage way has had agricultural uses in it and grading associated with the dirt low road. The lower portion remains in a more natural state, and because of that, a water resources report was required for the project. There are steep slopes on the site, and in consulting with the applicant, staff was continually suggested that the RTN zoning does indeed allow a certain amount of density transfer for 8 acres worth of RTN on a flat piece of land. However, in this case, that a planned development that created a higher density and also pushed the development up to the less steep and already disturbed portion of the site was the appropriate thing to do, rather than assume that an endless 10,000 square foot group of tracks and lots could just roll down the side of a hillside. So we have worked with the applicant to move towards that density exchange that a planned development allows. And in this case, there's a proportion of single-family dwellings and then attached dwellings, and that's the mixed development that's being proposed. You have a long description of the proposed project and the density considerations. Park Place Neighborhood has made some comments. And then there's the rather long and involved analysis of each of the sections of the planned development proposal. The bottom line is that staff believes that this project as presented could be developed if the proposed 24 conditions are followed rigorously. And with that, I'll close my presentation unless you have questions. I'm sure that the applicant's consultants will want to make a presentation after me.
Any questions, commissioners?
Not yet. Wait till.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Okay, we'll be ready then for the applicant's presentation.
I'm Brad Schleining. I'm an engineer with W.B. Wells &amp; Associates. I'm representing Lowell Whitkey, the developer here. And this evening, we want to present.
Okay, we need your address, please.
Oh, 3929 Northeast 21st Avenue, Portland, 97212. I don't want to get too far away from there. The development that we're proposing is a planned unit development. The driving forces behind going with the planned unit development as opposed to going with the standard subdivision is the RTN zoning and the slopes on the site. The site, as Maggie said, is traversed by watercourses. There's a couple of watercourses. We have some natural springs, and we have some pretty severe slope constraints on the site. The green up here is wetland area, which, part of the wetland area, this part right here, we are slated to have mitigated and removal. It is basically the roadside ditch along the existing pavement that Maggie mentioned. That pavement is quite overgrown. I want to get down to some of the constraints that we had to work with on the site. When we started out this process, it was with, it was two planners ago. We sat down, we worked through process, thought we had kind of a handle on it. Planner left. We came in with Colin, Colin Cooper, I guess, worked out some additional changes, came back in, met with staff just before he was leaving, got some really good input at that point, went back, basically, general road configuration is the same. It basically started over. What we had done, what we've done is we pulled all the development away from the top of slopes. The top of slope line is this dash line, and you probably have, or you should have plans available to you, but we have pulled the development, the development up above all of the slopes, the top of banks, and protected those. Everything here has been pulled up. We have gone to a skinny, a skinny street. We had, in the last proposal, there was a major impact, this road crossing right here, on the wetland area and grading. And we have done to minimize that is we have narrowed the street down to 20 feet, curb to curb. We have sidewalk on one side. We've used retaining walls on both sides so that we don't have to grade out at a two-to-one slope, which just really gets into the slope and the wetland areas and the drainage. We have also provided for an arch culvert that's without a bottom on it so that the stream bed that's there stays in its natural condition. We don't put it in a pipe. We just arch it. It's kind of like a low bridge. The grading has been greatly reduced from the last proposal. The blue area is basically the area of impact by grading for site development. That does not, it's not to say that that's what will be disturbed at housing, but just at the initial grading. We, as you can see, we have stayed out of the heavy sloped areas with grading all the way around. These are, this grading is back onto lots. We have stayed out of all the sloped areas, so we are not building slopes in the hazardous areas. Let's see. This orange line that is around here is the required buffer from the watercourses. And then what we have done is we have added to some of the buffer over here. We have pulled the lots up and out to give us a little more room, trying to get everything as far up the hill and away from the slopes and the drainage as possible, which is leaving a great deal of the site in an undeveloped, natural condition. We have a wetland up here that runs through here. The wetland, of course, that's underneath the road bed will be constructed over, and we're required to mitigate that. That mitigation, we're having a plan drawn up for that that'll go through DSL. This wetland up in here will be maintained. This wetland here will also be removed and mitigated for. The 29 units that we have proposed is dictated basically by the density requirements of the city. It's the minimum we can go, and that was our goal, is to get as few units as possible. This is a map that's showing the slopes and how the development now is impacted by the slopes. The blues, the blue color here is a 25% to 35% slope area. The orange is the 35% slopes. This area up in here is in the back of the townhouse, rowhouse lots. It is covered by a conservation easement. So this slope here will not be touched during construction or after construction. The development is, the road improvements are held back as far as possible. This line here, again, is the top of bank, and you can see that the curbs and the sidewalks are held back away from the top of bank. We have some 25% and 35% localized area where we are into lot areas. This up here is a, basically, is a steep, short, steep slope. Let's see here. Site utilities are really quite simple. There's an existing sanitary sewer that runs clear through the site. We'll have to decommission part of that and realign it, and this is the realignment for the sanitary sewer. That's a benefit to the city in that the sewer ends up in the street where it's easily maintainable. If you've been out to this site, you know that you would not want to be a maintenance person trying to do anything with that line. It is quite treacherous out there. Water line has to be extended from up near Holcomb, brought down all the way to the end of the site. We have services running out to the ends of the road. One of the big issues nowadays is storm drainage and how you're going to deal with it. We, what we have proposed here, and there was a comment in the staff report about moving some of the locations that we have, one of them is this wetland area here for water recharge. They have requested that that storm water be redirected and discharged into the wetland area, which is, I've drawn on here, which is quite easy to do. My question for staff and for probably the engineering staff would be, does the staff want that water detained, or do they want the, that runoff to go into a water quality chamber and then go directly into the wetland area? The reason I ask that is, water into wetlands is what you want. If you're holding up the water, that may not be, you know, the best, the best use for it. But we remove this line here, this becomes a detention facility for this part of the site. What we have here is a mechanical device to do the water quality. The reason we've chosen a mechanical device here as opposed to swales, it's, has to do with the environment. My feeling in this case is that with the steep slopes, we don't want to put water on those slopes. We don't want to dig trenches or shallow swales through the site. That just becomes an erosion problem. So what we would do is put a, what's called a storm scepter or a storm water filter. It's a mechanical device similar to a manhole with a composting agent in it, and run the storm water through that, which cleans, cleans the water up. And then we discharge that down the hill at a point agreeable to the city engineering staff and discharge it in a manner that doesn't create a, what's called a point source or an erodible condition. We have that same situation over on the west. We have actually, we'd be moving this line at the request of staff so that it will discharge into this existing drainage way. That is quite a simple move, and it doesn't change any of the basic concept on the plan. Tree survey. This is the water resource plan, and we have, we have Mirth Walker here from Fishman Environmental if you have questions on a water resource. We have Brent Ahern from McKenzie Engineering for traffic. And our geotech, I haven't seen him come in. Anyway, this is the water resource plan. Once again, the one thing that we really want to emphasize is how far back we pulled. We're staying as far away from the critical areas as possible. The site is really constrained by the slopes, and then we're also caught in the, in the density equation. It would be nice if the density could be reduced, but we're not allowed to do that. And that's what forces the, besides the code requiring that we do planned unit development, we have to have a mixed use, but that's what forces these rowhouses up to the density that they are. In short, that's our proposal. We will be here if you have any questions.
Okay, I'm sure we'll have a few questions. The trouble with our questions is we don't necessarily know who you want to have answer them, so we just sort of.
Let's go through them all and then we'll come back. If there's any other.
Just run through, and then we'll come back and answer questions later.
Sure. Did you have other presentations you wanted to make?
Nope.
No. Well, who wants to start with questions this evening, then?
I have no questions for the, for the applicants. I thought it was pretty well presented, and I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Sorry, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
Okay, now, I was told not to put the microphone directly in my face so that they could see my face. Now that we can hear me. I could, now I'm getting an echo. Okay, well, what I said earlier was that I appreciate the way that the applicant presented the case. I thought that it was well done, and I wish to hear from the public.
Okay. Do you have questions, Mr. Bailey?
Actually, at some point, I would like to hear. It is on.
No, it's.
Thank you. At some point, I would like to hear from the traffic engineer on, because I know that is an issue, the site development and design constraints. We've got a pretty good track record on. Thank you. And, but I would like to hear at some point from the traffic consultant.
Okay. How about then if the traffic consultant comes? He is here.
My name is Brent Aaron. I'm a traffic engineer with Group McKenzie, PO Box 69039, Portland, Oregon, 97201.
Okay. And maybe we could just flip the map back over to one of the pages that shows kind of the road configuration there so we can key in on what we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Bailey, do you want?
Well, I guess my question was, I'm not so much concerned about onsite circulation. I mean, what I'm interested in is the connectivity of the site and the development to Holcomb Road and some of the, the site distance problems that staff has raised in analyzing the project and what potential solutions might be. And I'd also was interested in whether or not you've looked at, whether or not your, the main street through there can be extended to the west in the future. I'm wondering if, you know, right now, it just goes into this little development area, the eight, eight-plus acres, but would that conceivably become a connector into an adjacent development further to the west? But more, more important, I'm interested in the, your take on the situation back out in the Holcomb.
Okay. I'll address the general circulation first and potential connection. I think the plan is that as properties develop to the west, roads would be constructed, internal subdivision streets that would provide a connection back to Holcomb to the west. I know at times there have been discussions about specific development on those properties, but there's nothing that I'm aware of at this point that's moving forward. But ultimately, as those properties develop, the road would connect through.
Through, through this?
It would, it would come through this way.
Okay.
To the west. And then there's, I think, two parcels adjacent, and by connecting those through, you provide another access to Holcomb Road.
And Holcomb Road, just for clarity, on our map here would be where?
It's to the north, towards the top of the page. And then the site distance issue at Holcomb Road, our analysis found, as has been referenced in the staff report, and you mentioned, it's inadequate at its current alignment. What we found was, for the most part, it's vegetation that blocks the vision. There may be some issues with the curve in the roadway to the west, although vehicles slow down as they go around the curve. And then there's a, a rise in Holcomb Road to the east. And what we'll need to be, need to do is, is take a closer look at that and work with county and city staff to come up with a solution that's acceptable to everyone. I think that's how the, essentially how the condition is awarded.
I was just interested in what you saw those solutions, what they might be. I mean, it's one thing if there's some minor vegetation clearing or maybe moving a utility pole back or something, but it's another thing if there's a major sort of realignment of that intersection, and then that brings up, you know, what are the costs and who bears the cost?
Sure. Obviously, the best case would be there's a few trees that maybe need to be removed and some branches that need to be trimmed. That's the best case. Worst case is there may be some regrading of Holcomb Road that would need to occur, and that would be to the east. To the extent of that, I don't know at this point.
So you're going to be connecting from Holcomb Road on this, you know, portion of road to the right of the property here?
Correct.
Going up that way?
Oak Tree Terrace Drive, I believe it is. Yeah. And then there are a number And then there are a number of homes currently along that roadway that, that utilize that access at this time.
For right now, thank you.
Okay, and the geotechnical person isn't there, so who would like to take a stab It's actually quite a simple question.
Yeah.
You were talking about the mechanical filtration system and with the swales and whatever, it's just sort of organic and they're big and it just flows through and cleans water. With your mechanical water filter, I assume it's going to be some kind of smaller unit. Can you just tell me a little bit about how that works and whether or not it's going to need to be cleaned or maintained or...
It'll have to be maintained. What it is, is a cartridge that goes into these that is made up of a composting material, composted material. And the idea is that the water comes in, runs through this compost filter, and then it discharges. The main advantage of that in this, this case is that the, in order to grade out a, a swale that's going to work here, if you're going to put, if you have two to one, three to one, four to one slopes and you want to put a swale across that, the amount of grading it takes and the amount of destruction you do to the natural environment is just phenomenal.
I understand that. So, okay, so that answers my question about that. And then I have another question about the retaining walls. And I'd like you to flip to one of the pages there that shows the lots or whatever, and I'd like to understand where the retaining walls are going to be going.
Okay, the retaining walls, actually, you have a retaining wall that starts here near the end of Lot 17, wraps this corner, comes down, the retaining wall ends down here. So it's a significant wall. This shows the height of the wall and these are in five-foot increments. At this point going over the creek, or right here over the creek, you can see that that wall is going to be, what is that, about 15 feet tall. Going to be a very large wall. And it snakes down to under 10 feet here and it comes down about eight or nine feet down here. And the type of wall that we are proposing is not a crib wall, but it's called an ultra block. It's a large concrete block wall that looks pretty nice. But then there's also a lower wall that goes on the backside of this road here. So what we're trying to do is keep this road sort of like a bridge so that we're not impacting the swale area.
Okay, and so these concrete blocks, are they something that would be martyred in or with rebar in or what kind of construction process would you have?
The construction process, and this is an earth, an earthen wall, basically is what it's called. It's a gravity wall. And what happens is you put a block of concrete down there. This particular wall would be a two and a half foot by two and a half foot by, like four or five foot long concrete block. It has pins in the top of it. You put a layer of blocks down, then you take a geotextile, that's a fabric for earth reinforcement. And you take that and you hook it over your pins that are on the front of the wall or in the middle of the wall and you lay, what you do is you lay the blanket back behind the wall. You fill, then you put your fill material on top of that blanket and bring it up to the next course. Then you put another brick down, you put another piece of fabric on, you pull it out 10 or 12 feet. So what you're doing is you're, it's a really stable wall. It's, in my opinion, they're better than concrete walls because concrete walls will have overturn, you know, they'll turn. But what you end up doing is you end up taking a concrete face and then you go back 10 feet and the entire thing, the entire 10-foot depth is a retaining wall. It's all compacted fill tied together with the fabric. That, they're real efficient, real, real good walls. Plus they give you, they're, they're flexible, so earthquake situations don't mess them up. Plus they, they bleed out. If you have water problems in your soil, they drain. They're not, you're not subject to the water pressures behind them. The water will actually come through the face of the wall if it's a problem.
Okay. And then are there any other areas, you know, along those green edges and where you would be putting any walls or are those just going to be...
Actually, it stays in its natural condition. These are the walls and what happens is right behind those walls, there'll be a construction area where we work, of course, but behind, outside of that construction area, there'll be no, no disturbance, which makes us, that, this scenario really applicable to this situation. It just helps us to maintain the natural condition here.
Okay, so what I'm driving at, what I'm a little bit concerned about is when you would have your properties and, you know, if I'm visioning this right, you know, your properties are kind of at the top where it's more flat and everything and then everything slopes down. So what are you going to be doing on your properties to protect the lots or what?
Okay, there are no lots in the area of this wall.
Right. But what about the other parcels?
These parcels?
Mm-hmm.
This is just, this is normal, normal grade. There's not, what'll happen is this house will be put on here on this lot. It'll most likely be a daylight basement type house. And there's about, oh, it looks like about eight or 10 feet of fall from the street back to the back of the lot, which is ideal for a daylight basement, which means that the homeowner does not necessarily have to grade in order to have a backyard. You know, they don't have to bring it up, they don't have to fill, they don't have to bring retaining wells. Now, the homeowner, if they choose to do so, you know, and that's part of their landscaping plan, you know, in the future, then that's always a possibility. But they can only go back to their property line.
Okay, so this is, you know, not to belabor a point or whatever. Again, it's back to the sort of visioning thing, you're trying to get the scope of what it is that you're doing up there. And so my mind is thinking about, you know, that I know there's a lot of slopes there and is there a concern for safety of children that might be running around in these yards and so on and so forth, they're going to be, you know, tumbling down these huge slopes to Never Never Land?
Well, basically what'll happen is along here, along the wall is where our biggest concern for safety would be. We actually have a sidewalk that comes along here and that will probably be required to have some kind of fence so that we don't have, not just kids, but people going over the edge. Back here on these, these home lots, this is only, that's tend to, the grades on that are not as significant. You know, if you live in Oregon City area, Westland area, you're familiar with slopes and these are no different than the slopes in most of the neighborhoods around here and you find... The slopes in these areas here on these lots are basically between zero and 25 percent, which are considered buildable, walkable slopes. 25 percent, I believe, is at four to one. So, as you can see here, all of our building, you know, where the actual homes are going to be, is going to be in that, in that zone. And what we've done is we've tried to stay away from the extremely steep, steep areas. And the other issue is, is that we stayed back away from the top of bank. So if there is a place where it come, the ground comes back and then makes a change of grade and is going down, we have surveyed in that location and the idea is to stay back from that bank. So I don't think that the safety issue of kids rolling out of their backyards is going to be an issue.
Okay, so on those two properties that would have the, the multiple units over there where you've got the orange slope, that's your grader?
This is uphill.
That's uphill?
That's going uphill.
Oh.
Okay, and so, and so what, what's envisioned here is shown, but you'll never find what's on. Okay. This, these units right here, this is what we call a cross section. I don't know if you, okay, but this is, is this like taking your house and cutting it in half? So what you have here is this is the street elevation, that's out here. Then we're coming back and this is a driveway into the garage. It's on the main floor. The garage is on, under, actually under the living unit. Then the living unit is eight, nine feet above the garage floor. By using that design concept, the living area comes up and as you can see, you're able to get a backyard for your house, plus you're able to eliminate that extreme slope. So that's, that's the concept, is to reduce that impact.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Anything else?
There's no other retaining walls on the uphill side of the, of the Woodpea Drive?
This is the, this is the only retaining wall here.
Okay.
And then this one here, there's a short piece right here.
Okay.
That's a four foot or, or less wall.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your patience with all that. Okay, so I believe we are ready then to begin the public testimony and I just have one person who wants to speak as far as having a yellow slip. If there's anyone else who wants to speak who didn't fill one out, we do need to have that. Otherwise, we have Ralph Kiefer, Chairman of the Park Place Neighborhood Land Use Committee, and he is opposed to this project.
I have six overheads. Do they need to be marked first or can I just have them shown?
Aye.
And I'll leave them behind. Okay, the, um, do you want to change them or my wife could change them? There's, there's, there's six of them total. Yes, as you heard, I'm Ralph Kiefer, 15119 Oyer Drive in Oregon City, Chair of the Park Place Neighborhood Association Land Use Committee. And I'm not speaking as an individual, I'm representing the neighborhood association tonight.
Okay. So your time allotment would be 15 minutes.
Okay. Hope to do less than that. First of all, we would like to commend the applicant for the redesign effort to accommodate various concerns we and others had about the steep slopes and the landslide potential. However, this was discussed at a recent neighborhood meeting, September 17. There was a vote by the association to continue to oppose the development for the reasons that are set forth in the letter that we wrote on September 21. It's Exhibit I at the very end of the thick pile. I'd just like to present the highlights of the reasons that are outlined in the letter. The neighborhood feels it's, it's a generally topographically inappropriate area. If you look at the topographic map, you can see the, the slope of the contours all throughout here and that the two new subdivisions, Wasco Acres, Trailview Estates, they're all on gently sloping land. But when you get to the piece of property in question, it's basically right at the headwaters of the stream, intermittent stream and still an erosional valley. It's just totally out of character with the rest of the area that's been developed. The property is, you can leave that on just for a sec, I guess. Upside down? Thank you. As was mentioned, of course, it is Zoned R10 and the neighborhood association would like to see development that's right at the edge of the city and near the urban growth boundary to be 10,000 square foot lots with single-family houses. They don't, they don't like the idea of these multiple fourplex units. There's some concern that they would all end up being rental units. The neighborhood already is probably super saturated with rental units with the various housing developments and so on. The number one reason though probably is the traffic safety concerns at the intersection of Oak Tree Terrace and Holcomb. And I've got four different overheads, they're all numbered there. Just went out and took some, some pictures. These are similar to the ones that are in the, the letter that's at the end of the, Exhibit I. Well, here I stood 15 feet back the edge of the travel lane, which is the official place for measuring the site distance. However, that's actually the white line it's painted, which I believe you're supposed to have the nose of your car at. So if you really stopped at the white line, you'd be seven feet back from here. And you can see, well, of course, some vegetation would have to go, but if you look at the next picture, here I stood right at the edge of the travel way, just lined myself up. The nose of the car is now seven feet into the pavement. The site distance is still pretty severely restricted. This is looking downhill. An even bigger problem is looking uphill. The next one, overhead four. Well, again, here, here I am 15 feet back from the edge of the travel lane and the site distance is reported to be 300 feet, maybe, 350 feet is the county's requirement. And the one I want to spend the most time on is the next one. Okay, I, I stood here for a while. Now I'm looking up Holcomb. This, of course, is Oak Tree Terrace. I'm right on the edge of the travel way. Again, if I were the driver, my car would be seven feet out here. I, I just wanted to see how severe that vertical curve was, so I just stood and watched. Cars go up the hill, disappear out of sight, never to be seen again. Well, then a pickup came along. Well, maybe I'll see the top of the pickup. Pickup disappeared out of sight. Then as I was standing there, a whole eight-foot or whatever high Federal Express truck just kind of rose up out of there and on down. That is a, that is a very serious vertical curve that probably take considerable amount of regrading to provide the proper site distance. It's also, Holcomb is kind of notorious for people coming down the hill well in excess of the 40 mile an hour posted limit. If we're going to add maybe another 60 children down the end of this lane, all somehow maybe wanting to cross this road, that's another whole consideration, hasn't even been mentioned in addition to the site distance. It's very pedestrian, unfriendly, all up and down Holcomb. So, so basically, that's about all I, I wanted to say. You don't need to show the last one, it's a repeat of the first one, that, that the neighborhood association is in opposition to this and has, has voted its opposition. That's it unless there are questions. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. And is there anyone else who would like to testify this evening? Okay, would you bring this up, please?
My name's Todd Erickson. I live at 16261 South Oak Tree Terrace, 97045. As far as the pictures that were just showing on the screen with, looking east with the rise in that hill, I mean, personal, just telling you what's happened to me before, just pulling out of there. He's right, you got to get your nose out in the middle of the lane to look left and then look right. And if by chance you look right and you see a car coming down, you got to wait for that car. In the meantime, you're still hoping something's not coming up the hill. I've actually made it out into the lane before and had someone pass me going down the hill. After I've looked, it's clear, pulled out, started going down or heading west, and I've had a car pass me before. Another time, looking left, looking right, you know, cars do speed going down that hill. Car went past, I got out there, went down there, didn't make the curve, ran to the telephone pole. And the Holcomb Fire Department did respond to that. And as far as, you know, right now it's a dead end street with the amount of traffic that we've had with, you know, I think that's, I believe a duplex down there right now at the end. We've had drug problems with just one house. Given with the amount of lower income housing further down, further west of Holcomb, having duplexes and renters or whatever's going to be happening, the amount of traffic with kids on both sides of the streets now, there's, I believe, six children that, just in a couple of houses on there, I think there's only eight units right now in Oak Tree that, with that many children playing up there and then given the concerns of the rock wall... With that many children playing up there, and then given the concerns of the rock walls and possibly falling, I... It's not good, especially with the traffic. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, and next up would be Dan Rinders.
Dan Rinders, 1-6261 South Oak Tree Terrace. I live on Oak Tree there, second house down. I have a five-year-old and a four-year-old right now. They play with the neighbors across the street, neighbors, another kid down the street. So I think he's right, about six or seven little kids playing there right now. And if you were to put, what, twenty-nine subdivisions or twenty-nine houses in that subdivision, maybe thirty, forty, fifty new kids also playing on the same street. Our street alone has no sidewalks on it. The kids play right in the middle of the road or right on the road because there's not very much traffic that goes down there. So if the subdivision were to go in, I'm sure we're probably adding maybe forty or fifty cars going up and down that road twice a day to work and home from work. There would be no place for the kids to play in the middle of the afternoon because there would be no sidewalks for them to ride on. And also, the school, there's Holcomb School right down the road from Holcomb. I'm in the same boat as my brother-in-law. I almost got hit on that road coming down. You look left, you look right. Car coming down the road, well, you have to stop because the car's coming down the road. Well, you're out in the middle of the road because there's another car coming up. So you've got to put in reverse to back up so the car coming up the road doesn't come close to either. But my main concern is my kids are going to start school there next year. There's no very good school access, them crossing the roads. If you're going to add another forty or fifty kids going to school there, there's no public crosswalks, no public signs, kids that will have to walk home after school. The cars coming down off of Holcomb are... I would say nine out of ten of them are never doing forty. They're always doing higher than forty going down the roads. Kids trying to run across the street, trying to cross the street with cars going that fast. I'm sure kids don't know how to judge cars that well coming across there. Just very, very bad access with that many new cars coming on that road. It's going to be a major accident. We've already seen one since we've lived there, and I've only lived there about a year now. We've already seen one, a pretty bad one, that hit the telephone pole coming down the side there. So that's what I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I have no more yellow slips, so I believe would be be ready then to close the public hearing unless there's anything else. Sure.
May I identify myself again?
Please do.
Brad Schleying, WB Wells, 4230 Northeast Fremont Street, Portland, 97212, or 213, excuse me. The... One issue that we can address is the issue of the rentals. I don't know where that's being generated from, but these are supposed to be townhomes or row houses, and they will be sold as single-family dwellings. They're not rentals. The cost of developing this site is immense with the amount of retaining wall and the infrastructure that it's got to go in, the water line being carried all the way up to Holcomb, and who knows what we'll end up having to do at the intersection for transportation. These are not going to be inexpensive lots. They're going to be very expensive. It is not going to be tract housing. It is not going to be rental housing, basically. And one of the other, Lowell Witke, the owner, he's going to work with the county and the city as far as the issue of site distance. We know there's a problem there. We really don't know how severe it is, except for at the one end going up the hill where the vertical curve is impactful. We don't know what the solution to that will be. On the other side, it looks like vegetation removal will probably solve to the, is that the west? That shouldn't, I feel that that'll be fairly easily accommodated. As far as children and getting across the street, that's not an issue for this development. It will become a practical issue that the, that Oregon City will have to deal with, but that's an issue that we deal with in all new development. It's a quarter mile away from the site, and you're right, there could be thirty, forty more kids trying to get across that street.
They come up on the bus and pick them up, so the kids really aren't crossing the street.
That's right, and it's actually on their own side. Anyway, not to minimize their concerns, because I understand their concerns. It sounds like we have some enforcement issues in traffic over there.
Okay, thank you again. All right, well, at this point in time, then, I think... Oh.
Brent Aaron again. Just wanted to point out that in the traffic analysis, we looked at five years' worth of accident data, and there were no reported accidents at this intersection. Granted, it's a low volume coming out of Oak Tree Terrace right now. A neighbor mentioned one accident. It sounded like it was a single vehicle, maybe trialling too fast. And certainly, when we look at the site distance, we're going to look at what the speeds are out there and keep that into account. And there may be some other solutions, whether it be enforcement or some kind of signing, et cetera, that we may impose to help slow down the traffic. So we'll, again, we'll work with county and city staff to come up with a solution. I should point out, too, that this is an existing safety problem. If we don't fix it, it's going to stay a problem. So by fixing it, it will improve safety for everyone who lives on Oak Tree Terrace, turning out onto Holcomb.
Okay, and this property does not butt onto Holcomb in any, in any way. It's away from Holcomb Boulevard by, what, did you say a quarter of a mile?
Flip over and show me the first page. I think it's got a vicinity map on it.
The very first page?
The very first page, and it has a vicinity map. You can probably point out Holcomb Road and where the site is.
Yeah, the site's at the end of an existing dead-end street. Do you know how long that road is?
I digested a quarter mile.
Okay. All right, Ms. Gart.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
I'm a little bit confused that it's, the site is on an already existing street, which the county had approved. So has the county since changed the regulations, and now those regulations require a current subdivision not accessing Holcomb directly? Will this site have its own street? It will go onto, or is Oak Tree part of... You see, the access is not, the subdivision's access does not hit Holcomb.
Correct.
So the county will or will not be looking at access?
What the, generally, what's required is that you look at your access point, at least out to the a higher classification road, whether it be a collector or arterial. And you want to make sure that there's capacity, which there is here, and safety turning out onto the roadway. And site distance is one of the many things that we look at. Now, when the existing street was approved, I don't know when that occurred, but at that time, they may not have been as concerned about site distance, or the county may not have had the existing standards that they have today. Regardless, the intersection was built the way it exists now. Now, to some extent, there's some vegetation that's grown up since then. That is, I think, at least to the west, that's the primary concern. The vertical curve to the east is probably a pre-existing condition, unfortunately. You know, it became an issue with this application, so.
Do you think that this is, the vertical curve is an issue that the county is going to be willing to look at?
I doubt that anything would happen without this subdivision. The county probably doesn't have funds, and the city probably doesn't have funds to spend to improve that vertical curve, if that's the case.
So the subdivision will pay for this? If there were any improvements to the vertical curve, it would come out of the subdivision funds?
That's the most likely scenario. I'm sure we'll see what we can work out with the city and county, but typically, it's the developer that would bear the majority of that cost, at least.
And how far are you going to to build the single side sidewalk?
Sidewalks are only proposed on the site. There's no, there are no sidewalks.
So there won't be any sidewalk built up to Holcomb?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe for the third and final time, we're ready to close the public hearing and deliberate among the commissioners.
Commissioner, excuse me, Chair Burson Garter. Before you close the hearing, I need to announce that the six overheads presented by Park Place Neighborhood Association is Exhibit Letter B.
Okay, great. Okay, well, this is, this is one of these tricky situations where Mr. Kavisman maybe will need to bail me out as I try to, you know, clarify some of the issues that we have when we have projects come forward. And it's always very difficult because the property owner has a right to develop his property as long as he satisfies all the criteria that would be subject to his development. And this particular PUD, you know, did not do that, and we sent it back, and they've come back with a new application that is, you know, very clearly two-hundred percent better than what was originally proposed. And for all intents and purposes, staff has recommended approval because it does fit the criteria. The neighborhood concerns with regard to the safety and the safety on Holcomb Lane and the site distance and crossing and, you know, the curve of the road, they are not this gentleman's responsibility with respect to the fact that it's a county road, and it has existed like that for a long time. And because we do live in an area that has geographical constraints, being hills and curves and so on and so forth, it's a problem everywhere. And I myself live just off of a street that has a hill, and my hill is shadowed by a lot of trees, and it's terribly difficult to see. And it's the same kind of a scenario where people are coming downhill there, and they always are going way too fast, and it's terribly dangerous. And I don't think that the county is... You know, I don't know what the solution to these kind of situations are if if the applicant is willing and the county is willing and the city is willing, and we understand that there's a problem there that needs to be addressed. It would need to be addressed independently of the fact that this gentleman wants to build his property. And it should be taken up in a manner that would be independent of his project. And as was possibly suggested, the fact that the project would go in might be a catalyst, if the project goes in, would be a catalyst for you to be able to move forward and take your concerns about the safety issues forward to the city and the county in a manner that the neighborhood feels that something needs to be done. Generally speaking, when development occurs, the applicant is requested to pay for improvements along the road. And it sounds like if there was to be development facing Holcomb where that road situation is, then those property owners would be required to pay for that. In this situation, the gentleman would be willing to do his part if necessary, but he would not be required to do anything because his development requirements would be on Oak Tree Terrace, if that's the right street there. And it's, again, it's always a difficult issue because we have these concerns, and these concerns come to us, and they're legitimate concerns, and they're very valid concerns, but they don't necessarily affect the application that's in process. And...
I do want to talk for a second about where there are a number of different ways that roadways get impacted. One of them is, we've had this discussion before about what you can and can't condition people to do, in particular about roads and sidewalks along the road. And proportionality is really the issue, what's proportional and what isn't. And that's really where we get into it. In this case, it's kind of a flip side, not really a flip side, but a different angle at it. And that is, you know, not only do you have to have proportionality, but you've got to meet basic requirements to show that it's safe, that the services can be provided. You know, when you get a partition on an existing roadway and you're asking for improvements, that person who is improving it can look at it, can point to the roadway and say, "That's adequate. This has enough capacity, and there are no safety issues to access it." And that's when we run into the proportionality question. In this case, it's a little bit different. It's, the improvement is not, the question isn't proportionality, but can access and transportation be adequately provided to the site? And the fact that it's, the problem is not directly on the site, but a little bit off, doesn't really... The proportionality isn't really brought into it. You know, above and beyond any proportionality, they've got to have adequate transportation. You know, there's a question of how far out you can go. You know, for example, in this case, you've got a twenty-nine unit subdivision that's being tacked on to the end of a street with, which has, I believe, six to eight units on it now. And so there's going to be a significant impact that's directly attributable to this particular property. So there's no proportionality issue because it is directly related. You know, when you have a street, if they were developing on Holcomb Road and we had them, you know, improve, you know, two-hundred yards on each side of theirs, you have a proportionality because most of the traffic that's being generated along that part isn't coming from the site. So this question of proportionality and having it, and having these improvements on or off-site is not quite the, it's not quite the same in this situation it has been in other cases. And I know it's really difficult to keep track of what, when it does apply and when it doesn't, and what you can and can't do. But in this case, they're required to have safe access. And in order to do that, they've got to have that intersection at the top of Oak Tree Terrace have adequate site distances. And they've, you know, and there's a condition, the staff has recommended a condition that, let me see if I can put my finger on it. Number sixteen says, "The applicant must obtain Oregon City and Clackamas County approval of proposed site distance improvements for the intersection of Oak Tree Terrace and Holcomb Boulevard." And the applicant has recognized that that safety of those site distances is an issue and has no objection to that condition. And so I think what we're, what staff has said is that there are serious issues here. They've got a responsibility to fix it before we put more traffic on that road and in that intersection. We don't know exactly what that fix is going to be. And it, and it sounds from the applicant, they're not certain what that fix is going to be either. But there are standards in Clackamas County about what the site distances are, and they're going to have to meet those standards. And that's really the bottom line. Does that make sense, or do you have?
Yeah, no, that makes sense and everything, and I'm glad you drew my attention back to that, you know, number sixteen there. But the thing for me is that it's an unknown factor. We're not coming to this hearing knowing what that solution is going to be. It just sort of leaves it out there to be discovered and resolved at some, at some point in the future.
And you are allowed to do that. And the important, what they have to show is that those site distances are either met or can be met. And what what the staff report says is that we don't know exactly what they are, but we believe they can be met. And it sounds like from the testimony, what the staff report said, vegetation removal, possibly regrading of Holcomb Boulevard, other things could be done to make sure that that is met. And it really does come down to engineering in some circumstances. There may be a circumstance where it just could not be met. I can't think of any offhand, but, you know, that's a question. Can you say? That's a question you face. Can you say that the site distances are met or that they can be met? And if you can say that, then you can approve it. If you can't say that they can be met, then you would deny it.
The burden of proof is on the applicant. The way this condition is ready to make the case with the city and county, both of whom have veto on the, veto kind of authority on any proposals to fix the problem. And really, it's set up so that that problem has to get solved and a plan has to get approved before any building permits can occur. That would seem to be fairly strong as a... That would seem to be fairly strong as a condition, as is written right now, in, well, at least in terms of approval, you know, mechanical or technical approval down the road from the preliminary, preliminary PUD approval, that helps.
Okay, so let's just say, for example, then, that it's decided that that hump has to be graded out of there. Who's going to assume the responsibility? Is it going to be a partnership responsibility, or does the applicant have to assume all the responsibility?
It isn't our, you don't have to worry about that. They would have to agree, the applicant, the city, and the county would have to agree. You don't have to specify at this point in your approval process who pays what to do, what, you leave that to the technical staff and the engineering staff to figure out.
And at the end of the day, it has to be improved before the subdivision can go in. And if the city doesn't have the budget to do it, if the county doesn't have the budget to do it, and the ODOT, ODOT doesn't have the budget to do it, and they can't find other funds, it is the applicant's responsibility, or they can't build the subdivision until that improvement is made. Certainly, the developer will, as I believe their traffic engineer said, try to work and find budget money to do that. But at the end of the day, it's the developer.
Okay, so then in other words, to clarify this, that this application, if it were approved, would not be able to be built until that situation was corrected?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Bailey?
Well, just to go back through the, through the development, I had real concerns over the first plan. And as you know, it was, and this is, the chair has said, is 200% better. It's, I think in terms of the site itself, it works on the site. I'm left not so much concerned about the grading and the retaining walls and so on on site and slopes and so on. I've been out there and looked around and compared it to other situations, and I think we're in pretty good shape. But it is the traffic coming up out of there onto Holcomb that is, to me, clearly in our ballpark. And I, I think there's like a continuum of possibilities here. One is to accept the staff's condition that basically a solution be worked out to the satisfaction of the county and the city before the project is actually constructed, and we sort of leave that out there. Or we could sit here tonight and design what that perfect solution would be and impose it, and I don't think we're going to do that. So, but I am wondering if, maybe for everybody's sake, so we don't build up a big head of steam on this thing, maybe we could ask for a little more information at yet another meeting on what the dimensions of this solution might be? I mean, I'd hate to get into this thing, and it doesn't sound like, based on my questions earlier, that we've really got to fix in what that possibility might be, other than clearing some limbs and some, and some trees. And I don't want to be in the position right now of approving a development and having it come back in two months and say, "Gee, many Christmas, we got approval, but we just can't get agreement on what to do with this intersection. Can't we go ahead anyway?" I don't want to get into some sort of built-up pressure to go forward on it. I would just soon not take a final action tonight until we get a better sense in what the dimensions of that solution are going to be. Because if the county says, you know, "We're going to have to go back on Holcomb a quarter a mile and really redo that whole vertical curve through there and, you know, put in a, widen it, and the costs are going to be in such and such a ballpark," and Mr. Whitkey says, "Well, I got deep pockets, but they're not that deep," then where are we? So, I mean, that's an alternative that we can, we could do. I think in the long run, if we can resolve that intersection, and unfortunately, it's on Mr. Whitkey, that it works for everyone in the existing homes, the existing families, and everybody on Holcomb who uses that intersection. I mean, I think it's going to solve a problem that is not going to be solved if this development doesn't get built. So I guess the question for us is, how much do we want to let this go in terms of saying, "Well, the staff recommendation clearly draws a line, and we'll let it go," or whether we want to back up and say, "Bring us back to the dimensions of what this solution might be, and then we'll see where we're at." But I think it's, it has to get fixed. I mean, this, this development is going to drive the major impacts at the intersection. There's no question about it.
We're looking right now, the one concern I have about the continuance is 120-day and where we are on it. I know this has had an extension in the past, and we're trying to locate exactly where that is, if there, if the applicant is willing to waive the 120-day, if you end up going in that direction. That would be a concern I'd like to see addressed before you decide on that.
Gina, what I heard Mr. Kavizman saying a minute ago was that that's not our part of this piece. Our part is the PUD piece. And with the condition, with the condition in there, condition number 16, that puts it over to then the experts who will then work out the solution. And if the solution is not able to be worked out, the, the project will not be able to be built until it is. And it might be that it would be a while before the project would be built if the funds are whatever, not available to do the road until a future date.
Certainly, I'd agree with that. I mean, but I guess the question is, for Mr. Whitkey's peace of mind, is he want, want to scope this problem a little more than we've heard to date before we go through this? I mean, you've clearly invested a lot of time and energy into the development to this point, and maybe there's a few extra steps. I'm willing to go with the staff's recommendation on, as a condition on this. But I'm raising the question, do we want to, for everybody's sake, get a little more certainty on the solution before we take some action?
I'd like to respond to that, to that question. Seeing as how I'm not a licensed civil engineer or a licensed geotech engineer, what sounds good to me may not necessarily work. And I realize that Commissioner Bailey's background is, is geology?
Well, sort of.
Geography, geology?
Long time ago.
And has strong interest, as do I, as a geographer myself. However, I'm not licensed, and I don't feel that I could do the job that a geotechnical engineer or city staff could. Once this is approved, then all of these conditions, my, oh my, 24 conditions that the, that the applicant has decided to take on, that he hasn't had any, any qualms about any of it, they are going to be expensive lots. And I think it's going to take some while, a time for them to get met. And in dealing with the county myself currently, they're being real, real picky. So I really think that it's going to take a long time to get this through. That is, if it can be done at all. With that site distance, luck. So I would prefer not to, to hear possible plans that may not do anything for, for me as far as knowledge.
There would be no reason to move forward unless we have an approval of the planned unit development. Once that's approved, then we can go forward into the other issues and find solutions for these issues.
But that wouldn't be part of our plan. It would go through city staff as a Class II development, administrative development, and then we wouldn't have...
Correct.
Any reason to see or hear that. That would be staff and engineering.
Ms. Orson?
My turn. I'm, I'm comfortable with the conditions that staff has put on here. I was still kind of leery of the proposal just because of the steep slopes and the water quality issues and the traffic issues. There are a lot of things happening in this little parcel, but after reading the conditions of approval, they are going to have to put a lot of work to get this project just off the ground. And it looks like if they do get it off the ground, it will be very well-constructed and hopefully will be good for the neighborhood.
Mr. Bailey?
I'd like to just add another thing along that line, is that looking at this, you know, given the existing zoning on the site, we can think of what alternatives might be built on the site under, under current zoning. And that's not, you know, given the density that could be there versus the design and the impacts from, from this developed, proposed development. I'll take this one any day. I think it's, I think you've done a really good job of working within the site constraints. I mean, there's a part of me that says, those are the kinds of areas and out at the edge, towards the edge of the UGB, that this density is maybe premature, but that's not for me to say. It is, I think in terms of the site design, you've done a really good job. I've appreciated the quality of the consultants, Mr. Whitkey, that you've gotten on board. I know several of them by reputation. And I would ask that in, in working with the city and the county, that you not forget the Neighborhood Association and the neighbors to the site, so that maybe when, when the resolution to the Holcomb Boulevard intersection comes up, that you think in terms of some sidewalk or some other improvements along that existing street that can help to benefit the neighborhood too. I know that's, that's asking more of you than maybe you're going to give, but I would ask you to work with them too as part of that solution.
Yeah, it might be a need for a special improvement district to make the improvements that you need around the school, also for the neighborhood, to consider that that would be a possibility. I also feel, it's very hard to visualize projects, and most, most of us aren't visually oriented to be able to see things like that. But this comes to mind, and it was mentioned, that Westland is a city that's built entirely on hills and slopes and so on and so forth. It's one of the most prestigious cities in our metro area. And if this project is done the way it appears that it would be done, I think also it would be an asset to the community. And I know that we do have a great need for, you know, row houses or condominiums or townhouse style, owner-owned housing of that nature. And I think that it could be a very nice development. And the issues that need to be resolved will have to be resolved in order for the, for this project to be built. And with that in mind, if the neighborhood could, as Mr. Bailey says, be notified when you get to that point and let them have a meeting about what the solution is going to be, and so that everyone's on board and knows what's going on. And possibly addressing a special assessment district to make additional improvements to that area if the neighborhood feels strongly about it would certainly be something to consider. So, are there any other comments this evening about this?
I don't have any comment about that, but to the gentleman who spoke about a drug house on Oak Tree Terrace, Neighborhood Association, get involved with your Neighborhood Association. They can help.
Okay, are we ready for a motion? Mr. Bailey?
I would move approval, that the planning commission approve the Oak Tree Terrace, better known as PD 0001. We approve it with the conditions listed in the staff report as, and as amended so ably by Ms. Collins at the beginning with the three minor corrections. And this would be on Oak Tree Estates, the planned unit development at 16281 South Oak Tree Terrace, Clackamas County map, 2S, 2E, 28A, tax lots 1717 and 1722.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion with a second. Please poll the commission.
Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner Surratt?
Aye.
Chairperson Carter?
Aye.
Motion to approve PD 00-1 is carried unanimously, and then there is an appeal period for this decision. And let me see, you can contact the office at 657-0891 for information on, on appeals or, or other questions that you might have.
And I would like to thank the applicant for coming forward with a very fine application. Thank you.
Thanks to people for showing up to tell us your thoughts. Didn't vote your way, but we appreciate it.
Okay, so we will move on, on our agenda this evening.
Should we take a short recess? I think we'll just do a five-minute recess.
And Carter and commissioners, I would like to, for the viewing audience, to just describe very briefly what this project is about, this waterfront master plan. We have about 328 acres that start at Fifth Street down, in downtown Oregon City, and a riverfront that travels along the north, along north to the confluence with Clackamas River, where the Willamette and the Clackamas meet. And then we have another area that goes easterly along the Clackamas River to Interstate I-205. Then if we travel back along I-205 to where it meets McLaughlin Boulevard and then runs from McLaughlin Boulevard to Fifth Street, we have encompassed this 328 acres that are called the Oregon City Waterfront Master Plan boundaries. This project is an outcome of the Oregon City Downtown Community Plan that was adopted in January of 2000 by the city commission. We will have a short presentation tonight by the consulting planners who have worked very hard with the city in developing not only the ideas and concepts that are in the master plan, but also have worked with the community to get ideas, hold workshops, and pull together public opinion and comments on whether the ideas that are in this master plan are worthy of the city, form a great plan, and have viability for, for future implementation. So there is one, oh yeah, I better, there is so far in our hearing process, there is one exhibit, and it is a letter, a six-page letter from ODOT. It's called Exhibit A. I want to enter that into the record, and I will pass it out to the commissioners as the project leaders go ahead and present the project. Staff is requesting that you hear the presentation, then you take any testimony tonight, and then continue this hearing to your next meeting. And if you have any questions that you wish the staff or the planners who have been involved with this to answer, please let us know, and we'll bring back those answers at the next hearing. Plus, we will bring our formal staff recommendation and findings for your recommendation to the city commissions. I forgot to say, that's where this one goes, after you take a public hearing and make your comments on maybe some very specific issues. And you certainly are welcome to recommend how you will, how you think the plan works or doesn't work, and where any strengthening or, or what, whatever, whatever feels the best to you and is in the best interest of the community, then that recommendation will go to the city commission, and there will be two more public hearings at the city commission level. So, thank you.
My name's Mike Zylas. I'm a principal with Walker and Macy. We led a consultant team looking at the waterfront in Oregon City starting last November. And we've been working consistently with city staff, the public, stakeholders, and others in developing this plan. Also with me tonight is Melinda... Also with me tonight is Melinda Graham with Walker and Macy and Dave Leland, an economist on our team. The project, as Maggie indicated, is bordered by the Clackamas River, the Willamette River, your downtown I-205 and up beyond the Tri-Cities wastewater treatment facility. The site presents an amazing opportunity for the city, reconnecting the citizens to, to the mightiest rivers in the region as well as a series of open spaces that exist there today. The process we went through, again, starting in November, we started with data gathering, went through research and analysis, which I'll present some of this evening, went through preliminary planning and public meetings, refined those plans also through public meetings. And where we are today is starting the approval process of the final master plan. And I believe you all received a draft document last week. The boards you're going to see tonight are taken directly from that document. We're going, we're planning on going through a series of steps so that by late November, ideally we'll have an approval by the City Commission. So, we're right here, right now. When we started the plan, we were given some objectives by the city, enhancing habitat repairing areas, integrating open space, creating development themes, increasing employment opportunities, increasing tax base and identifying public projects. So, those were where we started. Through a series of stakeholder interviews, we interviewed over, I believe there was about 32, 35 people, there was a, actually a surprising consensus that we found when we first started and it carried through the entire project. It really emphasizes the returning of Oregon City to its waterfront heritage. Today, the city's separated from the river in a lot of ways, from land use, from circulation systems, and people are really, through your downtown planning and through this effort, strongly urging the city to reconnect to the waterfront, emphasizing the history of the site, the Abernathy Green, the environmental aspects as well as cultural real important. There was a wide variety of other things that people talked about having to do with human scale and blending with the environment, connecting both or all pedestrians, bicycles and automobiles through and, and around the site, accommodating recreation as, as well as fishing and watercraft activities. And some of the important aspects that came out through stakeholder meetings as well as meetings with your staff and others is the need to partner with other public entities and leveraging available funds. And that's something Dave will talk about a little bit later. The site presently has a wide variety of uses. Again, the main focus being the Clackamas River and the Willamette and the Cove area. The Cove is a, is a closed gravel operation. It's about 10 to 12 feet deep and it was used for gravel excavation for concrete which was, was made at this location and then shipped around the region. There is a number of closed industrial sites, the Tri-Cities wastewater treatment facility, the Oregon City Shopping Center, hotel uses and then a variety of uses along the waterfront, including the marina, some parkland, Clackamas Park and some trail systems. It's a, it's a, this area provides us the best opportunity obviously for recreation while these areas have a real mix of abilities to, to be redeveloped. Looking at the floodplain elevations, one of the major aspects of redevelopment or any development in this area, including the trail systems or circulation, is the flood elevations. The area in blue are the new mapped boundaries of the 100-year flood elevation mapped in 1996. You can see most of our site is below the 100-year flood elevation. There's a wide variety of regulations related to this area, one of which calls for an average of a 200-foot setback from all water bodies and that's shown in red. There's also some wetlands adjacent to the site. We had a biologist go out to the site and look at habitat values. This refers to existing habitat which he ranked from good to poor. And you can see there's a kind of variety depending where you are on the site. The encouraging aspect of this report though is that there's lots of capability for the site to accommodate wildlife, both within the river and adjacent to it. We also had a regulatory specialist look at some of your zoning codes. There are three zoning codes that relate to this site, general, commercial, tourist, commercial and business, just central business, and then there's four overlays also. So, there's a myriad of rules just within your city that regulate the site. In addition, we have state regulations. We now have the listing of the Salmon and Steelhead from the federal government and other guidelines through other agencies. So, the, the site has a, just a myriad of regulations related to it. Dave, you want to talk about the market?
Sure. Good evening, I'm Dave Leland, I'm with Leland Consulting Group and our firm has had, excuse me, had the responsibility for analyzing the market and also making recommendations about a strategy for implementation. This is a very large site and it is a combination of both public and private ownership. And so, one of the things that we wanted to look at early in the process was, were there market opportunities for the private sector? And urban market opportunities are really in, in three primary categories. They're, they're either housing or office or retail. And what we found is the retail market is quite strong in Oregon City, that the housing market is quite strong and that the office market is currently overbuilt. And while there are some opportunities for future private investment within this large holding, there are also challenges that Mike's going to talk about largely that are created by fill. There's some property that's quite deep into the floodplain and would require filling. So, there's some economics involved with that. We can come back and talk about that if you have questions. The other part, I think, which is perhaps more important is early in the process, we decided we wanted to examine ways to implement the plan even before the plan was designed. All too frequently, plans are designed and then cities try to figure out how to pay for it or how to implement it. And we, from experience, think that these two steps need to go hand in hand. And there's a, there's a line and there's a couple of sentences within the plan that went to you and I'd just like to read it to you if you'll just indulge me for a second, it's not very long. It says, "A successful strategy is inherently common sense, an inclusive approach to developing or redeveloping an area. Oregon City has the opportunity to create a truly remarkable waterfront. It can be bold, innovative and exciting, or it can be a process of repair and fix-up. It is a choice and a matter of perspective followed by policy. Bold and innovative plans and projects cost more than piecemeal repairs, but they are also quite more likely to be funded." And our experience is that if you're going to have a, a bold policy, a bold plan for implementation, something that's going to create a powerful gateway to the north entry to your city, that you want to make a great plan because it's going to be on the landscape for 50 to 100 years or longer. And that Band-Aid approaches and fix-up, paint-up doesn't work very much, it doesn't work very well and it doesn't get people excited. So, if you're going to make a plan, make a great plan. And plans are really a combination of lots of little plans. There's little projects that go into making the great plan happen. Our, our primary practice in business is really traveling throughout America and working in downtowns, revitalizing downtowns. And we're fond of saying to cities, never let the number of projects drop below 25 when you're moving forward. Now, a project might be a private sector office building, it might be a park, it might be writing new policy, it might be a marketing program, it might be economic development grant hunting, it might be festivals, anything that furthers the plan is really a project and you want to keep them moving forward all at the same time. And in order to have a lot of projects moving forward, it becomes important to enlist the aid of as many people as possible, not just the people in the community. The planning commission and the city council really need to work hand in hand, they need to champion their staff and, and support them politically. But also you want to engage the state legislature, your congressional delegation, the business community and so on. So, over time, you try to marry pet projects with pet stakeholders so that people will work with passion for the things they really believe in, whether it's environmental restoration or museum or a, a quality restaurant on the waterfront. So, great plan, many projects, many stakeholders. And the other components then really have to do with sustained leadership. And that, and that leadership really needs to be at both the public and the private level. What we find is the cities just don't have the resources, either financially or human to do this alone. You, you really need to partner with the private sector. Pan Pacific, who owns the Oregon City Shopping Center, is very interested in working with the city to see how, how the city and that, how, excuse me, how the city and that project might be enhanced. And I think there's going to be other opportunities behind the shopping center, once we figure out how to deal with that fill problem, which is substantial. It's, there's really quite a, in fact, how deep does that go? In some cases, it's close to 20 feet, isn't it, Mike?
That we need to put in there?
Back in here?
Yeah, 15.
Back in here. Because really, there aren't, there aren't that many places in this, in this area. Well, I'm getting ahead of myself because you were going to go into that. Sorry, Mike. The other components, I think, is that it's going to take a commitment in terms of staffing on the part of the city to consistently and persistently go after funds at the state and also at the federal level. Projects for environmental restoration, waterfront development, cleanup, other kinds of planning funds and so on. And then there's a marketing and implementation piece that has to do with telling the story of success to the world. To let the, the world know that you're making progress, that you've made policy commitments, that you're going after money, every time you have a success, make sure that it's broadcast well because this brings in investment into the community, it brings in family wage jobs and so on. And there's some good models around the metropolitan area. Twallin's a good example of investing in its downtown and it, as a result of that, it produced, I think with about a $7 million investment downtown, over a five-year period, over $250 million worth of industrial development came in that was in part spurred by that downtown leadership. So, I can go into more detail, but I think, Brona, fairly-
Talk about the markets quickly.
Well, the markets, as I mentioned, are, are really, there is a housing market here. If we had a site ready to go and it was filled and it was zoned and properly integrated into a, into this area, we think there's an opportunity for housing. We also think there's an opportunity for more retail. We, we would hate to see the market just operate as it is because left to its own devices, it's going to continue to be more strip commercial and highway-oriented commercial. So, without intervention, you can expect to get more fast food and the like. And we think that would be very unfortunate at the gateway to your city. Can I cover it?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, what I'd like to briefly now do is go through the plan. Through our study and discussions with others and working with the city, we came up with some objectives that we thought were very important for the project. It had to do with, again, returning this, Oregon City to its waterfront, developing a northern entrance to downtown, encouraging mixed-use development in appropriate areas, enhancing natural areas and wildlife habitat, improving connections to and through the area, accommodating a variety of recreational activities, developing the Cove within, within a balance of habitat values and recreation, connecting the downtown with the waterfront promenade to the rivers and, and developing interpretive scheme and then seeking public and private partnerships. The plan that we're presenting tonight, this is of everything we're talking about, is probably the most important diagram. What it shows is public, I made you look, public open space. Connecting from downtown along the river and, including the Clackamas Park area, the Cove and above the Tri-Cities Treatment Plant and to the pedestrian bridge across, across the, the Clackamas River. Within that open space area, there's lots of abilities for active and passive recreation as well as wildlife habitat. This area that's circled in yellow is referred to as mixed-use and we see a wide variety of uses that could accommodate, could be accommodated there, but we think it's very important that the, kind of the singular development style that's there today get, get integrated whereby shopping, housing, perhaps office uses, overnight accommodations become an intermixed grouping of activities rather than standalone. And we'll talk about the, how to do that in a minute. Also, we call a public service area, which is at the Tri-Cities plant. They have plans to expand, they're doing a master plan right now that shows 20 years of expansion possibilities and they will likely be coming to the city to ask to purchase some property adjacent to their plant for that facility. Given their approach, which is a restored, which is based in restoration of the site as well as interpretation, we're recommending that the city negotiate with them and sell the property needed. We think they're a very good neighbor and well-funded to help this plan come to fruition. Within the mixed-use area, again, we see the potential for residential development, probably in multifamily townhouses or condominiums, a variety of, of commercial activities, some occurring in, in new buildings, some occurring in perhaps renovated structures and some office. You should keep the opportunity open for office development. We don't see a major market for that right now, but if it came in the future, it would be a good use. And then perhaps bringing some of the historic qualities of the city out to this gateway location through reuse of some historic buildings, perhaps even moving them to the site. The plan, looking from the outside in, we're recommending that essentially a green framework be built around the area, starting at the McLaughlin Bridge as it crosses the Clackamas. This is, should be seen as a gateway into your, into your city, encouraging replanting of the banks of the river there, excuse me, redevelopment of the historic bridge and really looking at this as the entrance to your town rather than down here. We think it's important to tie, tie your community to the waterfront. Also, part of this green framework has to do with encouraging ODOT to plant the banks of I-205 in the intersection at McLaughlin, to again, bring some of this historic quality of the, of the tree area right into your city. Direct pedestrian connections and bicycle connections via the promenade, a new promenade along the Willamette and out to the waterfront. We strongly encourage pedestrian connections and continued vehicular connections at 17th and Main, bringing people under I-205, pedestrian connections from the pedestrian bridge across the Clackamas to the north. There's a whole series of other specific items that we call for, for example, upgrading or encouraging the, the owner to upgrade the marina, defining public parking next to the marina and creating a series of overlooks along the, along the river. This board is, shows one of many different configurations that the site can take on. It's an illustration of the different land uses possible, starting with the mixed-use area, this is the, the Oregon City Shopping Center. We're suggesting that one of the main things to look at is trying to ventilate that holding with a series of roads and other connections through it. Redeveloping the commercial pads along McLaughlin in a more urban fashion to give a street edge, working with ODOT along McLaughlin to turn the street into a urban street rather than a urban highway is important in here also. And then looking at a mixture of uses of different housing types that could occur, could be condominiums or townhouses or other kinds of, of housing configurations. Both of these areas will require fill and given the current regulations, we need to balance the cut and fill within the site. We're calling for removing some of the fill in this area and restoring that as a wetland area, using that in this zone, as well as taking some fill out of here, which is not needed, at least in this plan, and using that so we can bring these two areas down to bring this up to make it developable. One of the main things that Dave has told us early and often is that it's very important to relocate the batch plant and renovate the areas with the old industrial property before these developments are possible. All of the developers we've talked to and we've done quite a bit of conversation throughout, well, throughout- well, throughout the region in the west, to developers, have all come up with the same answer of, "Well, once the site's ready, sure, I'll look at it." We've heard from specific developers that there is a housing market that could be located here and take advantage of the cove, but given its current condition, there's very little interest. The mixed-use area, then, should also spill across McLaughlin. The hotel remains in place, and we're looking at a position right here at this on-grade intersection for a gateway into the park. We call it gateway buildings, and this could be a great location for reuse of historic structures, for example, in this location. So as people come in through a revegetated kind of entry into the city, the first development they see on the right side of the road would be some structures of interest, and they could accommodate restaurants, multi-use areas, or multiuses such as weddings and that sort of thing. So it could be a complex there that, again, says you're coming into an interesting city. We also are calling for bringing the park development right up to that intersection, so that there's shared parking opportunities for both trailers and park users. Redevelopment of the RV park into group picnic areas and restoration zones, bringing the trail down through the park and connecting right over to the cove are all parts of that planning effort. Moving south, relocating the sheriff to a location next to I-205 on a piece of city-owned property, we think is, could be a benefit. That way, depending what happens to the cove and the movement of the river and that sort of thing, it's no longer impacted for, on the sheriff. And it seems to be a good location for easy access into the river, which is primarily where they operate. Renovating the, or asking the owner to renovate the marina. And then, down through this area, the red dash line indicates the promenade. And we've studied a number of conditions that the promenade could be built within. This is a diagram that was adapted from your downtown plan, where they showed a shared bike and pedestrian way, in some cases cantilevered over the bank, starting at Fifth and moving all the way out to the confluence. And we think that's an excellent idea, renovating the bike trail that's adjacent to McLaughlin right now. We're also recommending to work, that the city work directly with ODOT to try to get some more pedestrian connections across McLaughlin, to really energize that promenade. We looked at some other solutions of adding additional trails below the street grade, adjacent to the sewer pipe that's there today. We're not recommending that the city pursue that, based on extensive permitting, the cost of the project, as well as the difficulty of constructing it, and then the safety of pedestrians. But we do think at each of these intersections, you could have an additional overview, could step down slightly or something to kind of acknowledge that. Moving back up into the site, again, you can see the green edge to the plan along I-205. Over in the Clackamas Cove, we're calling for no-wake boating, continued use of the Environmental Learning Center, where it is today, trail systems that interconnect throughout, and development of sports fields adjacent to I-205. This could be an excellent location for those kind of facilities, given that there are no neighbors there to be bothered by noise and light, has good access. If we continue the street system through, we're calling for Agnes to continue through up to connect and down through the rest of the site, pulling this portion of Main Street away from the edge of the water for restoration, and creating a beautiful park zone that starts essentially up at the pedestrian bridge at the Clackamas and carries down around the cove out to Clackamas Park, from the promenade to downtown. So you can imagine that this is an interconnected series of open space activities for the community. This plan is an illustrative diagram of the land use plan. And it's strictly here to show people what it could physically look like in plan view. And again, it shows the redevelopment of the shopping center, housing opportunities that are visually connected to the cove, pulling Main Street away from the edge of the water, interconnected trails, reworking the entrance to Clackamas Park and circulation within it, removal of the RV park, that gateway, structure, or a series of structures, and connections back to downtown. Sports fields, and that is the expanded Tri-Cities Plant. So those are the plans to date. Sure, go ahead.
From a strategy standpoint, when we talk about making a bold plan, I think this illustrates that there is a certain level of courage that has to go with this, on the part of the public decision-makers. For example, this property is currently zoned industrial. And right now, there is a batch plan on it. If this is going to be protected for more intense use, then regulation needs to drop into place very, very quickly, with controls to go with it, to assure that this doesn't get used up for an inappropriate use in relation to the plan. Same thing is true with the property that's currently owned by the city. For sale as commercial use, it should come off the market and be preserved for becoming an integral part of this plan. At some point, the RV park would probably have to go. And there's going to be tough decisions like this, but they're pointed out in the report, and they probably need to be addressed sooner rather than later, before opportunities do get lost.
Also, in the report, you'll find a timeline for many of the projects that I described. And what we did was work directly with the city to try to categorize first year, some that could happen in the second, third, fourth through 10th, or 11th through 15th. There's a way of starting to get organized about what's the most important thing the city should do to implement this plan. We're suggesting the first two items are the most important, which is start negotiations with the Pan Pacific people that own the Oregon City Shopping Center. If you've been out there, they're already doing some work. They voiced a lot of interest in working with the city to see if there's more opportunity there and to reinforce this plan. We suggest that occur immediately, and also hiring a economic development director as a city position, we think is very important. These are extremely complicated projects. There's lots of coordination that has to go on, not only through the agencies, but with different developers and financial institutions and that sort of thing. And it really takes a strong director to bring these plans to bear. Then there's a whole series of development and implementation recommendations regarding zoning, design guidelines, working with property owners, seeking funding, some of the design work that needs to be done before development, as in working on the park and that sort of thing. We list some of the park improvements, McLaughlin and I-205. And we need to stress strongly that McLaughlin and the I-205 corridors are state highways, and working directly with ODOT will be very important to building a better gateway to your city. So with that...
Wow.
Anything else?
Wow. I was just had a question. When we had our workshop, we were talking about, you know, building the coast so it doesn't breach, or possibly just letting it breach. Was there any other additional information that was gathered about that?
Oh, we didn't gather any. I know the city's been looking at it. But one of our recommendations, again, is to, by removing the sheriff, you know, that issue is not as critical to public safety. And I think there's another team looking at the technical side of what it takes to reinforce or let it, or what happens if you breach it.
Just for some reason, that particular question popped up.
No, it's a good question. There's a lot of debate as to the value and that sort of thing, so.
Well, being on the Plan and Commission, sometimes you get to hear this part, but then you don't get to hear that part.
You don't get to hear the other part.
So, any comments or questions?
Just wanted to start with, did we have a work session on this recently, or am I having a déjà vu?
No, we, yeah.
Don't have one.
You showed up a little late, but yeah, we did. We were in the palatial room over here. Remember, everybody sitting with the boxes and all that.
And one of my questions, and I'm thinking about just some of the sort of onsite physical improvements that you might want the city to undertake, the street realignment and that kind of thing. Have you done any ballpark costs? I mean, have we gone that far into kind of, what's the magnitude of the situation here?
No, we have not started that. This is strictly a discussion of what's possible.
Of what's possible.
And we looked at the regulations and, from our experience, I think so. One of the things that Dave, again, is always advocating this, the idea of a great plan, is that you can get enthusiasm by other agencies. And we understand that a lot of these things we're recommending are expensive.
Sure.
And the more you can get other agencies to see the value and help you, the...
To what extent, if I may, have you talked with ODOT about any of this? I mean, sometimes it's hard to find, know who ODOT is, because different people at different district levels or state level, or the, an engineer versus a planner.
Right.
Have you had much interaction with that agency?
We did have a, we did have a woman on the technical advisory committee that we've met with a couple of times. She did mention that somewhere on ODOT's list, there is an item for re-studying McLaughlin through here. So that's where we got enthused about the potential of looking at taming the street, if you will, for the pedestrian crossings. ODOT also had an issue that she was very vocal on recently, related to this connection to the highway. It's shorter than their typical stacking distances. And so she was requesting, as this goes into further refinement that we look at, perhaps connecting a little further down, so the cars aren't backed up on the intersection. But other than that, she was very, I think she was very interested in the overall plan and the connections we were showing. But that is, excuse me, that is a very long process, so that's something that...
Well, I was going to say...
Your director needs to...
In some respects, the ODOT interfaces, they're the 800-pound gorilla in a lot of this.
Right.
And their timelines are really long.
That's right.
And their funding sources are big, if you get there. But to get there just takes a long time.
That's right.
That's why I was wondering what, how you'd really been working with them so far.
No, that was a liaison that we were provided. And again, it's something you just, you need to start and stay with, so.
Well, just one other thing on the ODOT business. The two bridges, I mean, one of the things that didn't strike me until I saw the report, and I saw both photos in there, you've got two Condi McCullough bridges in the planning area.
Right.
The one at the north end clearly is charming, but the one across the Walamette down here is just, is super.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
And clearly, those are a whole nother project in and of themselves, the maintenance and rehab of those bridges. But that's yet another sort of unique part of this opportunity, is those two historic bridges.
That's right. And they exist. So it's a matter of just renovating, not replacing or building new.
And in fact, the fire department, when I took the emergency preparedness, said that that old Oregon City Bridge was one of the safest bridges in the entire metro area.
Really?
Yes, he did.
Oh, that's great.
She's hell for stellar.
The bridge, I mean.
Well, just from my point of view, I've been really impressed with this whole process, having gone to open houses along the way and watched the development of the alternatives. And I think, as I may have said maybe one too many times, but I was interested in seeing this get underway, this planning process, when I was on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. And I actually am very happy tonight that some of my former colleagues are here from the committee to see this. But I think it's the kind of overview that the city needs to take advantage of the situation, because for so many years, and I'll say this to the commission, too, that this is fragmented waste space. It's been used and abused. And I think that's our attitude about what is really a potential for Oregon City as a whole, is reflected in kind of this fragmented, used and abused, and frankly, not very attractive area. But I think that this kind of vision that you're proposing here, and seeing it as worthy of our attention and our effort, gives dignity to the whole city and our entryway off two major, really three, including Amtrak, transportation corridors. So I see it as a really key to kind of Oregon City's self-image as a player in the region, and not just, as I like to say, another freeway exit.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Well, I guess we're not thinking of any big issues that we need to hash out or draw to attention, and the process has been lengthy enough and enough opportunities. I think all that hashing out has gotten pretty well accomplished.
I'm excited. I've been, I've been in this project since the very beginning. I can't believe we're here already. It seems like it's just gone really fast.
It was the city commission who orchestrated your beginning on this project, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you mentioned that piece of commercial property that is currently for sale, that you think should be taken off the market?
Yes.
Has that been mentioned to the city?
It was mentioned in the briefing we had with them, yeah.
And I would like to compliment you guys on your draft plan. You know, your graphic pictures and so on and so forth are very nice in here. They're very clear, and you can actually see all the details, and that's a rarity. So that's very nice.
Just along that line, on page one of the executive, or I guess it's the introduction, having tried to write introductions to a variety of reports and get them to fit poetically and succinctly into one page, whoever wrote it did a really good job. So my compliments on...
I thought you were going to find a typo.
No, no.
Well, let us have a second chance to read it a little closer.
But we found some, so. Thanks.
Okay, well, was there anyone, I don't have any yellow slips, was there anyone from the public that wanted to speak this evening?
Yeah. Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission, I'm not familiar with the yellow slip process, but my name is Michael Mason, and I'm the recently, I've recently been elevated to be Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I live on Jefferson Street down here in Oregon City. Whether that was a mistake or not remains to be seen. But moving here was not a mistake, being elevated to President, being Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. But we do like the plan. And currently, much of the area, as you know, is unused and unconnected as people enter the area. The way the arterial setup is, you enter from the north, you really are pushed right through the area before you even know where it is. It's, there's not, there's little that's been done to draw people's attention to the beauty of it, or to help with access to the river. Except if you already know where Clackamas Park is, then you would know that. I mean, it's very important, too, in terms of our planning for parks, as you know, our trails, I mean, we have very little. I think there's a historic reason for that. I think the pioneers were just hardly sick of trails by the time they got here, and they just didn't think they needed any in the city. And it's taken a century and a half to get to the point where we've kind of overcome that. My ancestors came out in 1866, and they didn't want trails either. So, but I guess in my generation, we're changing our mind on that. But it really, I think, helps tie in the, the plan helps tie in the area to the new Amtrak station, which I pray will be here soon. And that'll make the area more attractive to local tourists as well. The sports enhancement is also helpful and valuable for the county's youth, and doesn't get us, as was mentioned, into some of the problems with some of the neighbors in other places where we're trying to develop sports facilities. It's a very suitable development for this flood plain. So, and I think, finally, I would mention that I think it's very important to do, as the plan mentions, inventory of riparian areas. We're approaching the Lewis and Clark bicentennial, and by the way, the treaty sesquicentennial for this whole region, actually, the first treaties that is the sesquicentennial this year, but Congress chose not to ratify them, those first ones that were made with the tribes here. But I think it's very, very important to preserve whatever we can of what Lewis and Clark saw when they were here. We have different projections about how many tourists are going to be coming to the area. I don't think there's any question there will be millions over the next several years. How many millions? You go with the Stephen Ambrose projection, it's rather huge, but he's a great promoter. And maybe he'll be able to do that. That would be great, if he could help draw that many folks out here to see the beauty of it. I think, you know, getting started on this plan is important, you know, as you walk around that area, you realize that it's being overrun by blackberries. And not our happy, calm, little Chahalem blackberries, but the very aggressive, fierce... calm, little Chahalem blackberries, but the very aggressive, fierce Himalayan variety. And it's time to get in there, I think, and start doing the kind of fighting with those blackberries that we need to do to restore the beautiful native plants to that riparian zone. So I could go on and on. I think it's a, again, we think it's a good plan, speaking for the PrAC, and I would not be happy to answer any questions. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I have another thought. I just happened to be out walking around behind the Gladstone bowling alley back there, and there's a big...
You were.
I was walking my dog, and there is a big, you're going to get in trouble tonight. And there's a big vacant lot back there that I discovered a little trail that, lo and behold, goes down to the river on the Gladstone side of it. And you're talking about partnership opportunities and so on and so forth. I was just wondering if the city of Gladstone has been contacted at all to come on board to do things that might be opportunities on their side of the river as well, before they would lose their opportunities?
I know there's been discussion beyond this plan, but we haven't made direct, I haven't made direct contact with them, but that's a very good idea. I mean, we, we are, again, suggesting that fill area that they have right here be planted and that sort of thing, so maybe there's other opportunities too.
Well, I would think, because you express so strongly the concern of partnerships, that that would be something that should be addressed sooner rather than later.
Good point.
And I, with just this gentleman's point about, you know, the Lewis and Clark bicentennial and everything, what kind of timeframe might we be able to do something, or what kind of, you know, goal could we set for ourselves to have something done by then? So if we do have these tourists coming in, what could we do that would get the ball rolling and at least, at least do something to energize and beautify the area before they would come?
It's a good question. I think, I think there's some improvements within the park that could be done soon. One of the suggestions in the plan is an interconnected trail system that works not only with the Oregon Trail Museum, but brings people out to the waterfront, talks about the history of this area, and brings them back to downtown and into your other historic areas. So maybe there's some, even if it's a intermediate trail, if you will, something that you set up now that may have to be relocated in some areas, you may want to think about that. And, you know, go walk the trail, and maybe there's some...
I'll have to look at your list. I assume in here you've got your list of what, you know, would be first year, second year, third year stuff, so I'll have to look at that more closely. But it just seems like if we could get a fix in our mind of having a goal, and that would be an appropriate goal, to have something to work towards, and if we're working toward that goal, what would be the first things that we could do to try and beautify this area? And it sounds like the construction parts of it are the more complicated and more expensive, and those are going to be farther down the road, so that it seems to stand to reason that whatever trail and habitat and environmental things we can do sooner, that we would at least be able to accomplish that.
Yeah, get started. I think there's been a lot of communities that will set up a trail system, and people will walk along, and then they do demonstration areas. So maybe don't take on, I mean, to take on, for example, the whole cove is a large project, but to take on a portion of it and say, you know, this was planted in year 2001, and we're going to restore the rest in the coming years, is a nice way of advertising what your plan is.
Okay, so then if this plan gets adopted, as you've laid it out and everything, then it just becomes up to the city to try and move these things forward, and you're basically...
Well, we'd love to help, but yeah.
Basically out, okay.
It's up to us.
Up to us, oh, boy.
Now how much do you love the plan? No, there's lots of, again, incremental steps that the city can take, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Anybody else in the audience?
My name is Bill Daniels, and I'm also on the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee, and seen this process through to almost completion, at least on the planning stages of it. And I think that one thing that Parks and Recreation would like to see as an advisory group, and have made it known to the commission before, and of course, the Planning Commission as well, is in some format, and maybe to help answer one of the questions you have about how do we prepare for something as soon as the Lewis and Clark exposition, as far as people coming through the area. And I think that we need to somehow work to have an RV park somehow kept in our, in our park and recreation system. It has been a good moneymaker for the, for the city, for the general fund, and it would help to give a place for tourists to end up. Certainly not in the location it's in now, it may be in some other part of this plan, but that's something I hope that the Planning Commission takes on as a project for us.
Okay. Any other comments? Anyone else wishing to speak about, about this plan? Okay, so we are, are we going to be continuing this then to our next public hearing? Okay, so we can have a motion for that?
We'll continue the agenda item related to Waterfront Master Plan to two weeks, is that correct?
October 22nd.
October 22nd.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion on the second. Please pull the commission.
Commissioner Bailey? Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner Surratt?
Aye.
Chair Bruce and Carter?
Aye.
The second hearing on the waterfront master plan will be at the Planning Commission at 7:00 PM on October 22nd.
Okay, well, that's super, and we'll be looking forward to getting this down the road to finalization, I'm sure. Well, no, we have our, rest of our agenda stuff here this evening. So Ms. Collins, do you have any old business tonight?
The major old business would be that you have not met, I believe, Christina Robertson, our assistant planner here. This is her first meeting. She's, Project Liz on with Waterfront Master Plan, so I wanted to introduce her.
Okay, great, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to have you on board.
If you have any questions, contact me and or Sharon Zorn if members available. Hopefully, we can get all your questions answered.
Well, everybody, including staff, has done a wonderful job with this project, I think, so far, and it's really exciting to have something so spectacularly exciting. So, can't wait. It's enough to, it's enough to make, yeah, it's fraught with potential, it's enough to make me hang, hang in there, even though the going gets really, really rough. So do we have any new business this evening?
You know, that reminds me of the saying I have on my bulletin board in my office, which is, we are now, I, my mind went blank, I'll get it later, never mind. You have a work session Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM in here.
Okay.
And our other planners will be working with you. One of the agenda items that we're, we'll take a look at is where, what progress you've made on your nine, your 2001 work program.
Okay. All righty, any comments by the commissioners? Mr. Bailey?
Well, I forgot to bring it tonight, but I'll bring them on Wednesday evening. I was noticing in the...
Thank you. I was noticing in the Oregonian today, in the Vancouver edition, which I can see online, that Clark County is adopting an ordinance regulating cell towers, the siting of cell towers. And it struck me that we may want to continue to revisit that issue, and maybe get a copy of that ordinance, and see kind of what it might take to bring some order out of chaos here. We don't face that very often, but when we do, it seems like we do a lot of flopping around on it.
We have that on our work list, and we were, the staff was targeting, the Clark County ordinance is probably the most comprehensive and the best to take a look at. So yes, we can bring that to you at a work session with recommendations.
And I was also noticing on, in Salem there, dealing with a similar issue. I think they already have an ordinance. How good it is, I don't know, but there's a big controversy over whether or not a certain tower meets their ordinance, so the city of Salem might have something in place, too.
Okay, and I just have one comment that I thought would be interesting this morning in the Oregonian, I believe it was an editorial, was talking about the realization that this country needs train transportation, and it reminded me of Mr. Surratt's comments at our last meeting about her disappointment that the train coming through Oregon City would not be a commuter train into Portland, that it was just sort of a, I don't know what you call it, a travel train, not a commuter train. And that that editorial is very timely and very significant, and was asking the country to invest heavily in our rail system, and maybe Oregon City could lead the way with that concept and get some commuter action going on our depot. Any other comments? Okay, well, if everybody is in agreement, I'd like to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.